Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is December 10, 2024. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please bow your heads. Thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and the wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may continue to serve our citizens with integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Next, I'd like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator, Mike Zuproni. We missed you last week, Mike. Thank you for your assistance. I'll call on Mrs. Fisher right now for a motion to approve the minutes.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the council meeting and workshop minutes for December the 3rd. I find them in order and I move for their approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. A special presentation tonight, and I'm going to call on Chief Robbins to come forward. We are celebrating two groups of people here tonight, one for the Citizens Award and the second for a Life Saving Award. Now, let you explain what those two awards are and make the presentation.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, Mayor Lehner and City Council. We're here today to recognize a Kettering citizen, a Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts employee, and members of the Kettering Fire Department. I would like to recognize Dr. Jordan Hickey, PRCA staff member Sarah O'Malley, Captain Eric Hagamire, firefighter paramedic Chris Caudell, firefighter paramedic Ryan Hill, firefighter paramedic Austin Melendorf, and firefighter paramedic Trent Phipps. Will you please come to the floor?
On October 6, 2024, at 4:51 PM, Engine and Medic 34 were dispatched to 2900 Glengarry Drive, the Kettering recreational complex, on a reported seizure. Once on scene, crews upgraded the alarm to full arrest and Battalion 30 was dispatched. Prior to the arrival of Kettering Fire Department, the patient was just finishing exercising when he collapsed to the ground. He was immediately attended to by PRCA staff and a citizen, Dr. Jordan Hickey. Dr. Hickey immediately recognized that the patient was not breathing and had no pulse. She instructed PRCA staff to attain an automatic external defibrillator, an AED, and CPR was initiated. Once the AED was secured, two life-saving defibrillations were delivered to the patient. Upon arrival, Kettering Fire Department found a 35-year-old male who was semi-conscious with a pulse and breathing. The patient was placed on the cot and transported to Kettering Medical Center, KMC began. En route to the hospital, the patient lost consciousness and was again found pulseless with VTAC rhythm. The patient was defibrulated again and regained a pulse. Patient was treated with advanced cardiac life support, ACLS protocols, including securing an IV, establishing a patent airway, and the patient transport continued. The patient was handed over to KMC ED staff, and the patient was discharged from Kettering Medical Center on October 10, 2024, after much treatment, many tests, and has returned to normal life functions. The Kettering Fire Department Awards Committee recognizes the Citizenship Award as "awarded to citizens other than members of the Kettering Fire Department who distinguish themselves by performing acts or duties in a manner deemed above that normally required or expected and sufficient to set them apart from their peers at the scene of an emergency." Please join me in congratulating Dr. Jordan Hickey and Sarah O'Malley on receiving the Citizenship Award from the Kettering Fire Department. The Kettering Fire Department Awards Committee recognizes the Life Saving Award as "awarded to active members of the Fire Department or a group that saved the life of an individual on the scene of emergency that returned this person to normal life activities." Please join me in recognizing Captain Eric Hagamire, firefighter paramedic Chris Caudell, firefighter paramedic Ryan Hill, firefighter paramedic Austin Melendorf, and firefighter paramedic Trent Phipps on receiving the Life Savings Award from the Kettering Fire Department.
I would like to introduce Ryan Bernal, who would like to say a few words. I spoke with Ryan and his wife Jessica Bernal, and I had a few words that Jessica gave me about Ryan. Ryan was an active-duty Marine who served our country in Afghanistan. He is currently serving in the United States Air Force, where is he in his second year of residency as Doctor of Psychology. He is an outstanding father of an eight-year-old and a six-year-old, and she described him as "an outstanding guy who does good things." Mayor Lehner and Council, Ryan Bernal.
I'll address the seven of you for obvious reasons. So, Chief, thank you for the introduction. You stole a little bit of my thunder, but I'm glad you did. I did want to share a few details about myself to give you the opportunity, because I think it's a rare opportunity to come face-to-face with somebody whose life you saved. You know, I didn't grow up with much. I found my way into the military early, was looking for a step up in life, and it gave me exactly that. I'd been around the world, I'd served in some austere places, but all of that brought me to, on my path to medicine, and just wanting to make the world a better place. I know you don't know me, but I stand before you as somebody who's always tried to be, you know, a good father, a good husband, a good American in everything that I do. I married my wife Jessica, we started our family, had two kids, and eventually found our way into medical school, and here we are through a joint program through Wright State and Wright Pat. My life means so much to me for obvious reasons, right? We all do, but being those things, being a husband and being a father is what means everything to me, and it's something that I've worked so incredibly hard for to make the life that we wanted to forge for ourselves, Jessica and I. I say this about my life, not because I'm any more worth saving, but I hope understanding a little bit of who I am allows the gravity of this to sink in, the gravity of your actions, because I'm here literally talking to you because of everything you've done. Because of your willingness to act and the dedication to your jobs made all the difference. I'm alive. My brain has been spared, my body is all right there. I'm on a great track to recovery. Last week, I was throwing a football around with my son, and I carried my daughter. That means everything to me. To repurpose a quote that's meant a lot to me, Ronald Reagan said this, but he said yes. "Some people spend an entire life wondering if they've made a difference." You won't have that problem. On behalf of myself, my wife, my kids, my friends, my family, everyone, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you. Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. Will we allow noise?
No, you're not allowed to be loud.
I just have one question. Ryan, can you introduce your wife?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something you wanted to say, too?
Right.
Is she going to talk or not?
She's bringing her kids down here.
Oh, okay, the kids are here. Okay. Okay. Adorable.
So cute.
That's great.
No doubt.
That's great. Thank you all. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but I have a feeling that's not going to happen. I would ask, however, that as you exit the building, you quiet, because the sound travels really far.
Hi, Don.
I don't see Don.
Yes.
Oh, there she is. Thought you were hiding. Just give him a minute.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
City, we thank you.
Those are the good times. Okay. We also have a special presentation this evening from Dawn Kirchner. Dawn, would you like to come forward? And she's going to talk about the Christmas Day gathering at Lathrum Senior Center. Welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor Lehner and City Council members. I think the presentation tonight really, really reminds us of what the season is about, and that's giving thanks and appreciating every day as a gift. But I'm here to talk a little bit about the Christmas Day event, which is coming up very, very quickly. So, I'm here with Lindsay from the Volunteer Office. And so, this is our second year that we're going to be at the Charles Lathrum Center, which is 2900 Glengarry Drive. It's adjacent to the Kettering Recreation Center. The event will be held from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So, the benefit of holding the event here, as we found last year, is that this location provides plenty of free parking, RTA access right to the door on Route 28, which is very important, many accessible facilities. In addition to hot meal and plenty of sweet treats, we always have sweet treats, so don't worry, we'll feature holiday music, activities for all ages, and of course, we will have Santa Claus. He has confirmed his visit and is eager to take pictures with all of our visitors. This event does continue to be free to our community, thanks to the generous support of Day Air Credit Union, as well as dozens and dozens of community volunteers who step up to help set up for the event, prepare food, serve food, clean up after the event, and interact with all of our guests. For anyone interested in helping, we do have a variety of opportunities that are still available. All you need to do is give me or Lindsay a call in the Volunteer Office. You can also sign up online on our events page, stop by the office as well. We hope to see everybody there. If you aren't able to come, we do hope that you have a happy and healthy holiday season. So, again, this event is free and open to anybody in the community, and we're very pleased to offer it again this year.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Dawn. This is really an event worth stopping by. I know it's often difficult because you have family in town, all those people showing up, but it's well worth it. It's well worth taking just a little bit of time to stop by and thank the volunteers for all they're doing. And I would just like to comment, this is one of Dawn's last events as volunteer coordinator, and she is not leaving the city. She is going to be our new Sustainability Director, which is a new position created largely because her talents were so high, and we knew she'd do a great job with it. So, thanks for all your work at the Volunteer Office, and thank you for all the work you've got ahead of you. You've got a good challenge.
Absolutely. It's all right. I'm up for the challenge and have a lot of good support in the community. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Anyone have anything they wanted to add? Okay. Hopefully, we'll see you all on Christmas Day for at least a little bit. We have no public hearings this evening. I would like to mention at this point that if anyone in the audience wishes to speak to any of the pieces of legislation that we're going to hear tonight, now is the time to do that. You may come down to the podium, or if you're in the wings waiting to come in, because there's no one in the room. Please limit yourself to five minutes, speak directly to the City Council, and you're asked to first state your name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before City Council? Didn't think so. So, we will now move along, and Mrs., let's see, Mrs. Fisher, you'll start with the ordinances and second reading.
Correct, ma'am. I do have an ordinance to provide for the Table of Organization, Position Classification Plan, Compensation Plan, and Pay Schedules and Rules and Regulations pertaining to the conditions of work and supplemental benefits for the employees of the City of Kettering, Ohio, to repeal ordinance number 4408-24. It is requested by the Human Resources Department, and I move for its approval.
Second.
Oh, Mr. Noah Jenny. Jenny Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the second reading of the ordinance that was presented and outlined in detail at the December 3rd council meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing a pay increase for Clerk of Council Amy J. Hayslip. This is requested by the Human Resources Department, and I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. This resolution will provide a well-deserved 3% pay increase to Amy Hayslip, our Municipal Clerk of the City of Kettering, effective December 16, 2024. This is consistent with the pay increase provided to non-union regular full-time and regular part-time employees in the 850 pay grade series. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions? Let me just think about this. Call the roll. Would you like me to call?
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing a pay increase for Clerk of Council Amy J. Hayslip. This is requested by the Human Resources Department, and I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. This resolution will provide a well-deserved 3% pay increase to Amy Hayslip, our Municipal Clerk of the City of Kettering, effective December 16, 2024. This is consistent with the pay increase provided to non-union regular full-time and regular part-time employees in the 850 pay grade series. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions? Let me just think about this. Call the roll. Would you like me to call?
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Of course, yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to purchase body armor from Galls, I'm going to guess is the pronunciation. The estimated cost is $35,948.72. The amount budgeted is $35,000. This is requested by the Police Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. This is the purchased body armor that will be used by our SWAT team, and Chief, I don't know if you want to add anything.
I have nothing further to add, thank you.
Glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Did I pronounce it correctly?
Yes.
Galls? Good. Any questions? Call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to accept a brownfield remediation grant from the Ohio Department of Development. The estimated cost is $171,858. This has been requested by the Engineering Department. I move for approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. This allows us to accept and expend brownfield remediation program grant funds from the Ohio Department of Development through the Montgomery County Land Bank. Grant funds will be used to help pay for the cost of an environmental site assessment at the former Cheerheart Cleaners property located at 2659 Patterson Road. You may recall previously, City Council authorized a contract with Patriot Engineering to perform the assessment, a local match of 25% of the total project cost is required, which has already been met through the costs incurred to date with Patriot Engineering. Grant funds will be encumbered through a supplemental appropriation in 2025. Additional grant funds may need to be applied for as warranted once the work is done on this property. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution directing the Finance Director to commit an additional $500,000 of the general fund balance to be expended for economic development purposes effective January 1st of 2025. It is requested by the Finance Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. As you know, economic opportunity or advancing the economic development and opportunity in our community is a strategic plan priority, and for years, Council has expressed its intent to commit an additional $500,000 of general fund balance to economic development programs and purposes. This commitment is in addition to the initial commitment made effective January 1st, 2012, and each subsequent year through 2024. Legislation is required, special legislation as is presented tonight is required to meet the Governmental Accounting Standards Board rules in order to accomplish this intent. Amounts expended from the $500,000 will reduce the commitment accordingly. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to contract with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center for operation of the city's fair housing program. The estimated cost and the available funds is $30,000. This is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. One of the requirements of using Community Development Block grant funds, we also call those CDBG, if you want another governmental acronym, and home program funds from the federal of government, is that we advance or affirmatively further fair housing. And to achieve that requirement, we contract annually with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center to operate our fair housing program. Mr. Robillard, I don't know if you would like to add anything, but we'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you, Council. Call the roll. Any questions first? Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing a pay increase for Clerk of Council Amy J. Hayslip. This is requested by the Human Resources Department, and I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. This resolution will provide a well-deserved 3% pay increase to Amy Hayslip, our Municipal Clerk of the City of Kettering, effective December 16, 2024. This is consistent with the pay increase provided to non-union regular full-time and regular part-time employees in the 850 pay grade series. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions? Let me just think about this. Call the roll. Would you like me to call?
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Of course, yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution directing the Finance Director to commit an additional $500,000 of the general fund balance to be expended for economic development purposes effective January 1st of 2025. It is requested by the Finance Department, and I do move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. As you know, economic opportunity or advancing the economic development and opportunity in our community is a strategic planned priority, and for years, Council has expressed its intent to commit an additional $500,000 of general fund balance to economic development programs and purposes. This commitment is in addition to the initial commitment made effective January 1st, 2012, and each subsequent year through 2024. Legislation is required, special legislation as is presented tonight is required to meet the Governmental Accounting Standards Board rules in order to accomplish this intent. Amounts expended from the $500,000 will reduce the commitment accordingly. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to contract with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center for operation of the city's fair housing program. The estimated cost and the available funds is $30,000. This is requested by the Planning and Development Department, and I move for approval.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. One of the requirements of using Community Development Block grant funds, we also call those CDBG, if you want another governmental acronym, and home program funds from the federal of government, is that we advance or affirmatively further fair housing. And to achieve that requirement, we contract annually with the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center to operate our fair housing program. Mr. Robillard, I don't know if you would like to add anything, but we'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I have nothing further to add.
Okay, thank you, Council. Call the roll. Any questions first? Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to accept a brownfield remediation grant from the Ohio Department of Development. The estimated cost is $171,858. This has been requested by the Engineering Department. I move for approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor. This allows us to accept and expend brownfield remediation program grant funds from the Ohio Department of Development through the Montgomery County Land Bank.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, call her all.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Okay, we have... One ordinance is...
No, we're doing a resolution.
That's... okay.
We have one more.
One more resolution.
All right, one more resolution.
I almost think I was handpicked to read this one. Your Honor, I have a resolution to make appropriations for current expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio, during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025. And this is requested by the Finance Director. I move for approval.
The second. It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Grayson?
Yes, Your Honor, this resolution provides for implementation of our 2025 budget through appropriations for current expenditures and expenses and other expenditures. I want to take a minute to overview the process that we undertook to develop expenditures for 2025 and highlight for the public some important aspects of the budget that you are considering. First, let me thank the staff, directors, and assistant city managers who worked to prepare the budget documents. In particular, I want to thank Kelly O'Connell and Nancy Gregory on the Finance Department team for their work to collect, analyze, and prepare the information that you have discussed throughout the fall. Council consideration of this information began in August. When you reviewed our capital improvement plan, we presented long-term forecasts in October, and you reviewed the budget in detail in November. First, second, let me say we appreciate the questions that you have asked and the conscientious effort that has been made by all to develop a fiscally responsible budget that continues Kettering's commitment to high levels of service, programs, facilities, and investment in infrastructure. Want to highlight some aspects of the budget that I think are important. The 2025 budget shows a positive operating margin where revenues exceed expenditures. Staffing levels remain flat. However, through a careful evaluation of vacancies, we have realigned the organization to focus on strategic plan goals and invest in some much-needed areas. Specifically, the budget creates a dedicated sustainability manager, you mentioned that earlier, your mayor, responding to a goal in our strategic plan, and it assigns various existing staff members to the new Communications and Engagement Office to provide more coordinated communications, marketing, and engagement efforts. Additionally, we are investing in information technology, specifically cybersecurity, and have added a part-time redaction specialist in the Police Department. I will note again that this was accomplished with no increase to the full-time equivalent position calculation. Capital improvements are budgeted at $17.4 million. And consistent with our fiscal policies, we are using some of our reserves to support our capital improvements program. As a result, the general fund available balance will decrease some in 2025. This slide shows the total estimated 2025 fund balances in each fund. And you will note there is an estimated, there is estimated to be $52,321,296 in the general fund balance, and the all-funds balance is estimated at over $61 million. To give this context, here is a general fund balance trend slide. The maroon bar is the 90-day minimum. The general funds available fund balance, as projected is in 2025, is well above the three-month operating expenditures minimum. Our major revenue stream is always income tax. It's important to note, as you can see here, it represents 76% of the revenue that supports city services in 2025, while property tax represents only 12% of the revenues. Our expenditures are highlighted in this pie chart. Public safety expenditures represent almost 50% of all expenditures in the general fund, with police and fire combined. Transfers to other funds include an investment in our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Department of $9,500,000. While personnel have not increased in number, expenses are up as a result of wage increases between 2.5 and 3%, and the costs associated with health ser- health insurance, among other things. Overall, general fund operating expenditures are down 6.2%. In the capital outlight area, which is what we spend on equipment, that number is down to $2.9 million because we had larger purchases in 2024. Here are some of the capital equipment highlights for 2025. Give you a chance to look at those. They also, they include a VAC all in the Streets Division and a fire medic, among the more costly items. Our budgeted debt service, what we pay on outstanding loans, is a little over $2.7 million in 2025. Our outstanding debt is listed here. I would note that the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts improvements are supported by a levy, and the fire station's debt is paid through EMS revenues. Lastly, we are focused on continuous investment in Kettering's infrastructure. We do that through our Capital Improvements Program, or CIP, portion of the budgeted expenditures. Here are some highlights for 2025, which include repaving Dorothy Lane throughout the community, completing the West Group sidewalk, investing in Building 46 at the Kettering Business Park using state grant funds to get it positioned for economic development, making improvements to our Parks Maintenance Facility, and significant street drainage work in Golf Club Estates, to mention a few. I hope this information is helpful in summarizing some of the key aspects of our budget. And I want to say I greatly appreciate the time and attention that you have given our proposal. Your Honor, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? I do have one comment, and I'd like to thank the staff, particularly all of the directors, for the amount of time that they put into this budget. It's excellent job, and I think it gives some real direction and clarity to our goals for '25. So, thank you very much for that. With that, can you call her all?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Sudditt?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Okay, we have no ordinances in first reading. Mrs. Haislip, do we have any certifications or petitions?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, very good. I'd like to call in Mr. Grayson again for the manager's report, community update.
Yes, Ms. Kirchner ably described our wonderful Christmas Day gathering, so I won't talk a lot, other than to say 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Christmas Day. We welcome everyone to attend. We want to wish everyone a happy holidays, and of course, our staff will be celebrating holidays with their families as well. We will be closed Tuesday, December 24th, and Wednesday, December 25th. That's the administrative offices, that is. Due to the Christmas holiday, Rumpke's Service will be delayed one day for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday customers, so Wednesday will move to Thursday, Thursday will move to Friday, and Friday to Saturday. Of course, please place your trash and recycling at the curb the night before your revised collection day for the week of December 25th. And while we're preparing for the Christmas holiday, we also want to mention a Happy New Year, because this is our last council meeting before 2025. Our administrative offices likewise will be closed on Wednesday, January 1st. Similarly, to December 25th, due to the New Year's holiday, Rumpke's Service will be delayed for one, one day for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday customers. And we encourage you to make sure you know which day is yours, Wednesday to Thursday, Thursday to Friday, Friday to Saturday. Place your trash at the curb. Glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. We do have our usual near-end-of-the-meeting announcement that if anyone would like to come speak before council, this is on non-legislative issues, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak to council this evening? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll move on to city council reports, and I think we will start with Mrs. Fisher.
Your Honor, I had a great time at the Alta Fiber event. They invited the immediate neighborhood to thank them for being a part of our community, met some great UD players. It was a fantastic time. It's good to represent council there. Also, it was awesome running into Mr. Sullivan while I went to the Rosewood Arts Festival. Fantastic. I spent more money, I think, than he did. Husband gives me the look every time. And last but certainly not least, I will be at that Christmas party, so come, come out and see me, and I'll be probably near Santa Claus the whole time. That's all I have, Your Honor.
He is a wonderful Santa Claus. It's well worth coming just to see him. Mr. Sullivan?
Well, we haven't had any committee meetings or anything since our, a week ago, our last city council meeting, so I don't have anything to report in that regard. But I did get to, like everyone up here, attend the mayor's tree lighting. It was my first time as a member of city council, and I love that event, such a special event. And I love when all the kids surround you, surround the mayor and countdown.
I do, too.
It's a great night. So, the park staff did a wonderful job, as always. The park looks great. I drove through there this morning. I take a detour sometimes on my way to Fairmont, because I get there, it's still dark, and those lights look great. I wanted to let everyone know that, speaking of Fairmont, we have a community holiday concert at Trent Arena on December 16th at 7:00. So, that's Monday at 7:00 p.m. There will be performances by the Fairmont High School Bands, choirs, and orchestras. Kettering and Van Buren Middle School Choirs will be there. Greenmont, J. E. Press, Oakview, Orchard Park, and Southdale Elementary will have choirs there as well. Admission is $5 per person, it's $10 per family, and all proceeds are to benefit the music scholarship program, so it goes to a good cause. It's a, another wonderful event, and there's a lot of them this time of year. And the last thing I want to say, it's our last meeting of my first year on city council, and I have loved my time on city council because of everyone in this room. So, I just wanted to thank all of you and say that I am so optimistic about the future of Kettering. I feel like we're heading in the right direction. So, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. It's been a wonderful first year, so thank you.
Thank you. Shane?
I, before this, there was a Partners for Healthy Youth meeting that I get to serve on for the council, be the council liaison, and I thought I should let everyone know that one of the things we reviewed is how the bus route is doing that was added this year. And I've got some numbers in front of me that it just keeps growing every month. And according to our new Parks and Recreation Lead, Bill Cheerhart, the RTA, said that, is it RTA or MTA?
RTA.
Okay. They said that it is on track to achieve the ridership that they hoped for. And so, that was really encouraging. And really is due to the great work of the previous community liaison that was there named Janelle. And so, she really, that bore fruit, so I thought everybody would like to know that. Second, I just, it was awesome to see how the budget is doing so well. The city's staff has done an amazing job, and, you know, it's a great city. And I also love that the city does the Christmas tree here to help kids with Christmas presents and the amazing things we do for seniors during the holiday services. And I really feel like collectively, this city, the volunteer spirit is amazing, and that during the holidays, people really do consider people who may not be having the greatest of Christmases. Something that stays on my mind all the time, and I want to mention again at the end of the year, is that we have a hunger problem in Kettering. And our neighbors have the biggest hunger problem, are among the worst in the country. And also, multiple, the lowest of like all the developed countries, which is Dayton. And we're, well, we're above national averages in Kettering, which is shocking. But as people celebrate the holidays, there are so many ways to help. There are so many people who've organized people to help. The Kettering Backpack Program is one of them. And it's kids and seniors and the disabled that not only are not going to get gifts, but they're not going to get food over Christmas. And so, just want to have everyone be mindful of that, consider volunteering or donating. The Dayton Daily News publisher said in her letter to readers in the Sunday paper, "The power of community in Dayton is unmatched. We lift each other up during difficult times, and we don't let our friends and neighbors go hungry." And you can go to the Valley Food Relief page to see the numerous organizations that are helping with food. And I do really want for everybody in Kettering to have a great Christmas and New Year's. And I'm grateful to be a part of such a great community as Kettering and the opportunity to serve on council, representing the city. That's it for me.
Thank you.
I prepared my remarks this afternoon, and I was sitting in my office prior to knowing about the presentation with the Fire Department folks earlier. And what I've got to say is going to kind of pale in comparison to the awesomeness of that. As Matt Grayson mentioned, this is our last council meeting for 2024. And typically, at the end of the year, you look back at the previous year, and also you look ahead for the upcoming year. And it typically gives thanks. And I think a group of people who, the average citizen, probably takes for granted because they're behind the scenes. And I just want to thank the police, fire, streets, parks, and other staff. You're the guys who make this city run, okay? Also, just to the regular citizens and the business owners who choose to live and work here. We should not take that for granted. People choose to live in Kettering, Ohio. And with our volunteers and with our staff and our great services, it makes this a special place to live. And I'm proud to live here, and I'm proud to serve on this council, and I don't think anybody should ever take it for granted.
Thank you.
Just one or two quick things. First of all, the tree lighting was so fun. It is such a great event. But I want to publicly apologize to Jill, because my dog scared your dog, and I'm so sorry. It was very sad.
He is scary.
Tragic. But my dog did not scare you, stop it. So, the only event I want to talk about is I was invited to the Fairmont High School International Feast. The ESLOL students, I know, that look on your face. The ESLOL students, they bring in food that they've made from their home countries, and you get to eat it and talk to the students, and oh, it's amazing. And I was asked if I thought next year maybe the mayor would want to come?
Sure, tell me.
And I'm like, oh, probably not. But next year, I'll make sure everybody is invited. It is a wonderful event, and you get to sit and talk to these kids. And a couple of them were honest and admitted that their moms made the food.
No.
Yeah, a couple of them admitted it, so. That's really it. I just want to say, everyone have a happy holiday, and it's been a great first year with Shane and Brian. So, thank you, guys, for a great year.
Okay, thanks.
Two food events in a week. Bill gets to judge the soup at the, at Rosewood. You get ESLOL international tasting. It seems unfair. I also, I had some neighbors I ran into and friends at the tree lighting, and it was a very different experience to be there as a part of council. So, thank you for just how fun that was. I, as you were speaking, I was talking to the choir kids, who are just fantastic, and...
You weren't listening to me?
I was actually not. I was chatting with the entertainment, and they're just great. The next day, though, I did have the opportunity to volunteer at the Hope for Kettering, Hope for Centerville event that's there on Bigger. And it's just a neat example of what happens when the faith community comes together to multiple churches and organizations that produce an event for underserved families in our community, that parents can come into a store and shop for their kids. I was simply a gift wrapper and tape dispenser for my wife, who really did the good wrapping. But just to get, to meet the volunteers from across our city, and as well as families who took advantage of that service, is just really special afternoon on Saturday. On Sunday, I was a guest at Temple Beth Or for their annual brisket lunch, so I did get food this weekend at the temple. Well, you got to know the men of the temple. I'll introduce you. And also, their holiday bazaar. And it was just a good time to spend time with folks of that faith community on Sunday, which is very strange to leave church and then go to their temple for lunch, but it was a great time there. Also, just to remind everybody, if you don't have your shopping finished, I've been reminded that Town and Country this weekend is the Holiday Market from 11:00 to 3:00. There's like 40 vendors that'll be in the, the main walkways, and it proves to be a great time. Stand Up will still be there, but the Holiday Market is this weekend at Town and Country, and you'll see me there scrambling for the last items of the year. Thanks for a great first year. Thanks for the leadership of Lisa and Bob and Jackie and Jill and the mayor for making this first year very fun and a learning experience, and just for the patience of folks like Amy and Matt for helping Shannon along this first year. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. You're all a great reminder of the many neat things that are happening around the community right now. And thank all of you for making the time to attend some of those events. I haven't made as many of them this year as I would like to, but hopefully that'll improve as the year wore on and I can start walking again. The tree lighting ceremony was indeed a beautiful event, as it always is. And I want to make a public apology to Bill, however. Before the meeting started, I was sitting there talking, before the tree lighting, sitting there talking to you about how I always forget to recognize one person in the audience. And I got up and managed to forget you, and probably as many, as much as anyone there. As the Director of Parks and Rec, I know even you came in at the tail end of it, but I know you were pretty busy at the beginning there. So, thanks to everyone who spent all their time and effort making it such a special event. Christmas at the Lathrum was one of those events I didn't get to, but I understand there was quite, quite a good crowd there. And it's just so neat to come, come together in that beautiful facility that we're really enjoying. that we're really enjoying on a regular basis. Uh, I think everyone's pretty much covered the events that are going on. Um, I would like to just remind everyone, however, that the New Year is also coming up before we have a council meeting again. And everyone's going to be making all kinds of resolutions.